The January 26, 2016 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesies of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic device or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County's school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters in which the school board customarily take action, you must first complete a peach form located on the front table. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or student discipline matters, please complete the lime green form. This form must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. These procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Carol Ely, District 2.
Present.
Mrs. Angie Boynton, District 4.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Mr. Bobby James, District 3.
Here.
Mr. George Tomlin, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Lake, Board Attorney.
Here.
Okay. Mr. Dan Davis, Interim Career and Technical Education Director, please introduce the students who will be providing the inspiration and leading us into pledge this evening.
Thank you, Mr. James. Mr. Tomlin, Chairman James, members of the board. February 20th, excuse me, February 20th is the beginning of the Southeastern Youth Fair this year, February 20th through 27th. We're very pleased to have with us tonight two ambassadors that are high school students here in Marion County to lead the pledge and to do the inspiration. First is Cassidy Clark. Cassidy is a sophomore, fifteen-year-old sophomore at Bellevue High School, and she's shown animals at the youth fair for eleven years, seven of those years through 4H, the remainder through FFA. And throughout those years, she's shown almost everything from dogs to beef heifers, but what she likes to show the best is swine. She's shown swine eight different times at the Southeastern Youth Fair. She's very glad of Southeastern Youth Fair, what it's offered to her and the many sponsors that provide opportunities for students through the Southeastern Youth Fair. Also, Maddie Shannon is a sixteen-year-old junior at Bellevue High School. She's representing the FFA program. She's been in FFA for six years, had also been in 4H for three years. She's shown at the Southeastern Youth Fair for six years and shown everything from chickens to cattle. She's serving as the Bellevue High FFA Vice President this year and was also the FFA Sub-District Chairperson. She's also served as Southeastern Youth Ambassador for four years. Cassidy Clark for the pledge, Maddie Shannon for the inspiration.
I pledge allegiance... Oh, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual for liberty and justice for all. Where ribbons will fade and trophies grow old, money soon spent and fame soon grows old. Hello, my name is Maddie Shannon. I am sixteen years old and the Vice President of Bellevue High FFA. This will be my sixth year showing at the Southeastern Youth Fair. For most people, when you think of the Southeastern Youth Fair, you think of the outstanding exhibitors and the individuals that walk away with the fancy rosettes. But what about the one thousand other 4H and FFA members that don't walk away with the winning animal or the best-in-show prize? These members gained so many great experiences that they could not gain from anywhere else, including leadership, responsibility, and time management. The nerves, smiles, and sometimes tears are shared at the Southeastern Youth Fair, and they are what connect all of us together. The important things are not the ribbons or pins, and sometimes it's the loser who wins. The drive that all of the individuals hold are the true win in this experience. The members who walk their animal in the show ring or participate in tractor driving are many of the other opportunities that the Southeastern Youth Fair has for all of the participants are the real winners because they have had to drive to follow through with what they have signed up for. They never gave up when there was a bump in the road or when something didn't go as planned. They had the perseverance and drive to make it to fair in February. The important things are the friends you make, the experiences you take, cooperation, and dedication. They'll help you become a mighty fine man. They'll do more for you than any prize can. In ten or twenty years from now, you're not going to remember the photography winner or the grand champion, but you will remember the friends you make and the lessons that you've learned. The Southeastern Youth Fair impacts so many individuals, including parents, participants, and even the vast public. I urge all of you to come out to the Southeastern Youth Fair in February to see what this wonderful opportunity is teaching the youth of Marion County. Thank you.
Ms. Ely.
I will be out there watching y'all with your animals, and that's just such a neat experience for everybody to go out and see. I know some of the elementary schools have started the 4H clubs. Shady Hill for one, and they show their animals. It's just great to start in the elementary level. I know y'all are high school. I also saw on our consent agenda, they're building a new barn at Don Ellen High and Bellevue High. They're doing some renovations and restorations, so I'm glad that we're putting money where it counts. So congratulations, girls, and maybe I'll see you out there.
Thank you.
Mrs. Stacy.
Congratulations. My whole life has been showing horses and show dogs and working dogs, and the friends that I've made along the way on the circuit are my friends today from when I was a child. And so the relationships that people who are competitive like you are, the relationships that you build, they will last forever. These are days that you'll, you know, I just go from one horse show to the other, and my brain just rattles along as I'm thinking about them, and I know you're going to have those experiences also. So congratulations, and the relationships that you're building that other children are not building through animals, you will have for a lifetime.
It's always important that we recognize the Southeastern Youth Fair, but it brings about so many other things. You know, when I look at politerary procedures, I look at the fact that you guys learn how to really balance a budget, keep track of what you're spending on it, and write letters to people that you want to bid on your hogs and cow. So there's some people in here you haven't wrote a letter to. So pass the word to the guys that are out there, that the letters, we look forward to getting those letters, and I'm sure you got some people over here that would love to help and support the Youth Fair. Thank you, and let's have a great Youth Fair. Okay.
Well, I just wanted to say congratulations, but also enjoy what you said, Maddie. It's, you put it all together in that they're winners and there are no losers, that the winners, everybody's a winner when you participate in this Youth Fair, and I really, really enjoyed your inspiration tonight, and thank you both, girls, okay?
Send them a letter.
I'm also going to say congratulations, and I agree, the words that you said tonight covered a gamut, but you also spoke about leadership and responsibility and time management, and those also are skills that you're going to take with you and use forever, and you guys are awesome. Keep it up.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Superintendent.
Board, I recommend approval of the agenda for the January 26, 2016 School Board Meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to the board members at the meeting, the audio recording included, is part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the Superintendent's recommendation?
So move.
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Ely, second by Mrs. Boynton. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
My computer decided to reconfigure for no reason.
May she vote for you?
I did.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, the motion passed, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the January 7, 2016 Administrative Briefing and Work Session? May I have a motion and a second?
So move.
So moved by Ms. Ely.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Boynton. Are there any additions or corrections in the minutes? Saying none. All in favor signify by saying aye. The motion passed, five zero. Mrs. At a Public Education Foundation Officer and Mr. Nick Blazer, Public Education Foundation President, would like to recognize a new business partner for Pheasant Elementary School. Mrs. Nettie.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman James, Mr. Tomlin, and board members. It's always good to see you. I told you I'd be back a lot. Before we do our business partner presentation, I wanted to just draw your attention to a flyer that I've left you at your seat, and I have some extra flyers here on the table, and there are some more in the lobby. This is a save the date for our next Engage in Education meeting, which will be February 17th, and the Public Education Foundation's Board of Directors is very excited to be bringing to Marion County Mr. Ray McNulty from the International Center in Excellence in Education, and several of our principals and district administrators have heard him speak before at model schools conferences, and we are excited that he's going to be bringing a very important message here to Marion County public schools. So please mark your calendars, plan to attend, and bring some folks with you. Okay, now on with the show, and I'm very excited. First, I'm going to call to the podium from Pheasant Elementary School, Principal Cynthia Brody, and Assistant Principal Matt Johnson, and from Allstate Construction, Tom Neeland.
Joe Neeland.
Joe Neeland, I'm sorry. I've gotten his name wrong all night. I've been practicing in the hallway. I am so sorry, Joe. And we know that Pheasant has been looking for a business partner for some time, and we're very excited and very proud that Allstate Construction has stepped up to partner with Pheasant. And we have plaques. Nick, if you would give one, please, to Mr. Neeland and Ms. Brody.
Congratulations.
One for the school and one for the office. And Ms. Brody, please, if you would say a few words.
We are just really excited up at Pheasant Elementary, our community and our teachers and our students and our staff. We are just thrilled to death that we finally have a business partner, and it's with Allstate Construction, and we're looking forward to the wonderful partnership that we are going to create with them. Thank you.
And Mr. Neeland.
Yes. I want to thank the board and everybody for the recognition here, and really thank you for the opportunity, you know, for us to serve and to give and to give back. Thank you very much.
And we know that business partners are important at all of our schools, but sometimes it's even more special at a school such as Pheasant where some of their families struggle to provide their students with some of the extras that we see coming into other schools. And just one quick other shout-out to Allstate Construction. This past Saturday, our Board of Directors of the Foundation held a tennis-a-thon, and Nick Blazer, our Board President, kind of chaired that for us, but Allstate Construction was also one of the sponsors of our tennis-a-thon, so we thank them for that.
Thank you.
Okay, Kevin, did you get all your pictures? Okay, excellent. Thank you very much.
Before y'all get away now, you know, Pheasant is probably one of the oldest schools in the state of Florida, and when I say that to you, we talk about 1868, 1869, and when I think in terms of Pheasant, I bring back fond memories. My first school was Pheasant School, and when I look at the area it represents and the historical value that it brings to our school system, it's just a pleasure to have you onboard. And I just want you to know, those awnings need a little attention.
I'm sure we'll be working with some projects together.
Okay, I just want y'all to know that. So, but once again, thanks for coming onboard. We appreciate it. Okay, thank you. Ms. Judy Zanetti and Mr. Blazer, please remain at the podium to recognize a special donation and sponsor of the Kids' Tag Art Program.
Thank you again, and now I'm going to call to the podium Steve Hall and Mr. George Albright, our Marion County Tax Collector, and they've brought with them a big check, and tonight they're here to recognize the Kids' Tag Art Program. This is the fourth year they have done this program for Marion County public schools and our elementary school art teachers. And you all know the importance of the arts, particularly with our youngest students, our elementary school students, and our students that are exposed to great art programs do better in all of their subjects. So I'd also like to call Belinda Vosup, and she has with her some of our great elementary art teachers.
Hello, how are you all this evening? I'd just like to introduce some of my art teachers to you. We have Jamie Rocher from Maplewood Elementary School, Dr. Marshall Pettway from Dr. NH Jones Elementary School, Veronica Eason from Marion Oaks Elementary School, I knew that, Joyce Guilfoyle from Bellevue Santos Elementary School, and they just came to say thank you for supporting the arts and especially thank you for supporting the Tag Art Program. It's wonderful.
Mr. Albright or Steve?
Steve. Thank you.
Thank you very much for allowing us to come this evening and present this check. This is our fourth year with the Kids' Tag Art Program, and we're very happy to help the schools in the art program with this. As you know, we've had some great sponsors that have helped us with the program. We have Jenkins Auto Group, who's our main sponsor. They've given $10,000 for the last four years. We also have some other sponsors. We have the Fine Arts of Ocala, FFO, they give us a thousand, and for the last two years, we've had the Florida Heart Research Institute that's given us $1,500 every year. We also have in-kind sponsors from the Appleton, who allows us to have the award ceremony each year there at the museum, and they also give the families of the winners some passes so that the families can go back and go through the museum free of charge. We also have Woods Printing, that's been our printer for the last three years now, and they continue to do a great job for us. And we also have our charities group from the office that also does some work, too. Just a little bit, we have given, over the last four years, we have given back to the We continue to enjoy to do this program, and we're glad to give back to the schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joyce?
I'd never miss an opportunity to say something.
Mrs. Superintendent, thanks for coming all four years, and I know all of you have come one or more times, and we very much appreciate it. As I stand here, fifty years ago, I came here in the back of this building as a kid at Weersdale Elementary for the... Why are you laughing at me?
Seems like just yesterday.
Seems like just yesterday. And, but I came here for the art program, and they put us on the bus from Weersdale, and that seemed to be, that was like journeying to Mars. It was so far in those days. And we came back here in the back, and they had the art displayed from all of the students in Marion County, and I couldn't draw then, can't draw now, but it made an impression on me. And it was interesting, too, thinking about, I must have been in the second or third grade. I remember looking up to the fourth, fifth, and sixth graders coming and searching out my older peers of what they did, so what it's worth. Anyway, I just want to thank you all for being part of this. We had ninety-nine percent participation this year. We're going to have a hundred percent participation next year and raise a lot of money for the kids and for the teachers, and onward we go. Thank you all.
Thank you. Mrs. Stacy.
George, I think that those of us who can't draw a straight line with a ruler appreciate this more than even artists appreciate it because I have absolutely no artistic talents, and I'm just always amazed that I have to buy everything. I can't even make a basket with flowers. I have to go to the art show for everything, the craft show, and it just so amazes me that there's this kind of talent that God gives people that he sure didn't give me, and praise the Lord. Thank you.
Ms. Ely.
I wanted to congratulate the art teachers. You do such a good job trying to get those kids motivated and to be very artistic. I have the two tags that were given to me as a board member hanging on my patio and lots of comments about them, but kudos to y'all. Thank you.
Can we bring them around and get them in front of the podium right here?
Absolutely. They're the stars of the show.
Yeah, just swing around and get in front of the...
Come on, Steve, George, come on.
Steve, come on.
I have to say that, Mr. Chairman, we did not bring a tag for you all this year. We couldn't because they were still imprinting. That was part of the reason. Last reason was you all got in altercation, if you all remember, last year, trying to fight over who got what tag. We kind of didn't have to deal with that.
And I would like to add, as a person that also cannot draw a straight line with a ruler, but I know that our teachers will attest to the fact that all of our students have ability, and that especially the elementary school age, it's the process and not the product that they are learning in their classes, and they are learning something, and they are stretching their minds and educating themselves each and every time they're in your art class.
You know, I had the opportunity to go into Mr. Pettways', Dr. Pettways' now, class, and it's just amazing what the teachers get out of these young kids that may not be interested in anything other than getting to the art class. So this is important, and I want to congratulate all of you again because y'all make kids believe, and y'all help them to draw what they believe. Beautiful job that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much, and I'm sure that I will be seeing you at some foundation
and district events soon, and I will be back at board meetings, and don't forget to mark your calendars for Engage in Education.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you, Judy.
Mr. Mark Viannella, Executive Director of Student Services, is here to honor and recognize contributions of student service professional for Student Services Weekend.
Mr. James, good evening, and thank you, Mr. Tomlin, and board members. Yes, I am here to talk about Student Services Week, upcoming Student Services Week, but first I'd like to make a few comments and recognize that in education, we talk a lot about data, don't we? There's lots of conversations about data, but it's important that we keep in mind that behind every piece of data, behind everything that we analyze, there is a student attached to that piece of data, and that individual student has hopes and dreams of what they would like to accomplish in their future. So when you think about, when you think about that in relationship to our strategic plan, we've got that nice flow chart with our strategic plan that has elementary schools and how elementary flows into middle school and how middle school flows into high school, and then how high school flows to beyond, to what a student's hope and dreams and what they would like to accomplish. And it really kind of talks about, too, the purpose of education, the aim of education. Of course, we want students to be successful while they're in school, but more importantly, we want students to be successful in the lives that they lead out of school. So we lay that foundation during the, up to fourteen years, if the student's with us in pre-K through their senior year. We lay that foundation so that they can build their hopes and dreams for their individualized future. Now, for many of our 42,000 students, they're going to go through our process and they're going to do very well, but for some of our 42,000 students, they're going to need additional academic and behavior support for them to be successful and for them to have that foundation laid for them. And in part, that's what Student Services helps to do, whether it is a timely conversation from a school counselor or a student who needs additional behavior support or a student who needs specially-designed instruction, which is our, is ESE, a student who may need help from a 504 plan or a health plan, or a student that is required to go through and spend some time in alternative programs. Our department is there to help support students and to help support our schools who support our students so that each one of our students, and we're talking all of our students, I see Ms. Man, rest of her, all of our students can be successful for living out their dreams and their goals. So the state of Florida has recognized February 1st as Student Services Week across the state of Florida. I'm very proud of our department. I wish we had the time and the space to bring all 300-plus employees in front of you. Of course, we don't, so I would like to recognize the lead for each one of our departments that fall underneath the umbrella of Student Services, and I will go in, well, I'll go in alphabetical order. I'll start with alternative programs, and with us here tonight is our program manager, Mr. Dwan Thomas, for our Exceptional Student Education Program, ESE. We have Ms. Barb Dobbins, and Ms. Dobbins, we have, the eight thousand of our district students are...
Ten thousand counted.
Ten thousand.
Counted.
Counted and gifted. So we have Mr. Matt Lane, Supervisor of Psychological Services and Social Work Services, and last but not least, we have Mrs. Janet Weldon, who is the Director of School Counseling and Assessment. So what I ask everyone to do, next week, when you see someone who works underneath the umbrella of Student Services, if you could please take your time to pat them on the back and thank them for a job well done, serving our schools and serving our students. How about a big round of applause?
I just want to say a few words about this, and I know I'm chair, so I have that After you've been around a long time, it is really nice to see the changing of the guards because we're at this point now in the school system where it's beginning to change. I see new faces, younger faces, and I just think the board at some time needs to recognize the new people that's coming onboard because retirement is here, and just looking at the new people there, and I know I have one that we'll be replacing, but it is indeed a pleasure just to see the direction we're going and what we're doing. Thanks, Mark. Job well done. Okay.
May I say?
Yes, sure.
Thank you. Mr. Viannella and members of the Student Services Department, I just want to thank you because you're the critical part, the kind of the glue. Every time a parent calls me, I look down my list and I realize your department is the first one that I have to call, and I've never, I mean, never been disappointed with any of the information you give. I mean, you guide me and you take that parent on and guide them through every step of the way, and I know that not only do I appreciate you, but the parents, the students who you support and you help through every obstacle or just to give them guidance, I really appreciate it, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Mrs. Stacy.
I'd like to compliment you also. I send so many people to you. I'd like to compliment the others and Mr. Lane particularly. He has a tough job overseeing the social workers that have to do the tough jobs to make sure that these attendance issues are dealt with, and I know it's not easy, but they're doing a great job, and I know things are looking up for us, and I want to thank you for putting this theme behind it and helping this district change its numbers and go the different way. Thank you so much, Mr. Lane.
You are definitely the wind beneath the wings of our children and our teachers, but thank you so much for being there all the time for us. Thank you.
Yeah, I also agree. Sometimes I think they might be a group that is maybe overlooked, but they're very instrumental in the fact that probably anytime anything is not going like clockwork, whether it be a parent, a teacher, administrator, a school board member, we know where to look, and you guys are greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kathy Quaylon, Executive Director of School Development and Evaluation, please introduce the individuals who will be recognized, Ocala Marion County Association of Realtors Mini-Grants.
Thank you, Mr. James, Mr. Tomlin, members of the board. It is a pleasure to be here this evening. We've already seen some great presentations this evening, and we have one more. We have another community group who is helping our teachers and our students in our schools with some grants that they have sponsored. So this evening, we have representatives from the Ocala Marion County Association of Realtors who are going to present mini-grants to several of our teachers. We have our teacher representatives here, all but one who couldn't be here this evening, and also their principals are here representing their schools as well. So I'd like to introduce the association executive, Darlene Yance, and with her is the past president of this organization and the chair of the committee, Randy Alford. the past president of this organization and the chair of the committee, Randy Alford.
We also have one more with us, too, John Celebra. He's been a longtime member of our Community Awareness Committee, and thanks for being here again. Darlene and I were talking, I think this is doing some math, this is our 15th year doing this, and we also brought a big check. Look at that. Working on that all day long. She's pumped about it. But again, at the beginning of the school year, I believe we get our invitation to apply for these mini grants, get that out. I think that everyone has it at the beginning of the school year. This year, for some odd reason, our applications were down a little bit, but we had about 75 applications, which is great. We awarded a total of $6,000. I brought my little basketball superstar and four-her here to hold the check. And if it's all right, I was going to ask John to read off the names in the schools of the... Oh, you don't have your glasses? All right, never mind, I'm going to read off the names. All right, Carol Alvarez with Saddlewood Elementary School. I think you're going to go all the way up to the front. Sarah Paris, Wyamina Park Elementary. Kathy Ballius, Romeo Elementary. Marissa Griffin, Hillcrest. Natalia Perry, Hillcrest. Edna Mitchell, Hillcrest. Apparently, they got the email. Donna Reynolds, Osceola Middle. Kim Herak, and I apologize for pronouncing Liberty Middle. Jessica Monjario, Forest High School. Phyllis Jarvis, Westport High School. And Katrina Vitkus, Denali High School. All right, well, these 11 teachers, for a total, Haley, will you walk up in the middle and have them handle the check? For a total of $6,000 split up, you know, we just read over their request, and I'm glad we could do this for our 15th year, and we'll hopefully do it several more years to come. So, thank you. Oh, and Darlene said she wants the check back.
Mr. Everett, what about telling us about some of the grants that we got? Do you have that with you?
John, do you remember reading over some of the applications?
Honestly, I don't remember each one individually. We get so many that we have to go through. It's very difficult sometimes deciding which ones we can supply the grants to. We'd like to see more applications come in. As Randy said, it was down a little bit this year, because if we get a lot more, we can go back to the board and ask them for a little bit more money to give out.
Would one of the teachers like to kind of explain the grant process?
That would be nice.
Sure. I'm Jessica Monjario. I'm a second-year chorus teacher at Forest High School. We just started a program after many years of not having it, so I didn't have a lot of choral-related resources. So, I mean, there's a written application process and to sort of explain the need for some music literacy resources to prepare for adjudication. So obviously, my subject area is probably different than some others, but they granted it, and we've had great use of it in my classroom, so much appreciated.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Beth, do we have anyone else out there? I thought she wants to talk.
Yeah, Donna Reynolds from Osceola Middle, and I teach an IND, which means mentally handicapped self-contained class. And we're out in a portable, our resource, but we were lacking wall maps, classroom maps, you know, such a basic thing that you remember from your elementary schools. But the ones that were available to us were outdated, and so, you know, I applied for the grant and got a world map and US maps so that now when we're reading the stories or we're learning about science or, you know, anything that happens in the world, now we can point that out on the map and know where we are.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to just say on behalf, Ms. Boynton.
Okay, thank you. Randy and Marion, Board of Marion Realtors, you know, it's really, tonight for me, as I look out at all the people who came and have given to the Marion County School Board, it really touches my heart because you know there is a need, and it's citizens like you, groups like you that reach in and fill that gap. And I really sincerely appreciate it. I've known you for a long time, and all I've known is you've been a wonderful giver to our community, and I want to thank you. Thank you, Darlene. I mean, you all are there always. Thank you from my heart.
Thank you.
Ms. Stacy.
I'd also like to thank you, the time that it takes as a volunteer to just go through all the applications. People, you know, doesn't just magically happen. It takes time. And those who volunteer are the ones who always volunteer. They're the same ones over and over that do things for other people. And you're just marching down the road of great character, and thank you so much for doing what you do because it does take your time away from your family, and it takes time for the teachers to write these requests. They have to really put their time into it. So there are those who do and those who do not, and y'all do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Randy.
All right, thanks. Have a great night. Thank you.
May I have a motion to adopt the proclamation recognized in February as Black History Month? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Boynton, second by Mrs. Ely. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Kevin Christian, Public Relations Officer and TV Media Production Coordinator, and Ms. Teresa Bosnelli Ellis, Deputy Superintendent, please come forward for the reading and presentation of the proclamation.
Good evening, Mr. James, board members, Mr. Superintendent. Let me read this proclamation to you. It says, "Whereas Black History Month shares the historical and present contributions of African-Americans, whereas Black History Month began as Negro History Week in February 1926 in the United States as a supplement to the school curriculum through the work of African-American scholar Dr. Carter G. Woodson. His aim was to encourage a greater awareness and understanding of the African experience and contributions in America, Africa, and throughout the world. Whereas later in the 1960s, the week expanded into Black History Month to commemorate a more balanced and accurate picture of black history and is celebrated during the entire month of February as it coincides with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln. Whereas throughout Black History Month, we celebrate the many contributions African-Americans have made to our nation, and we are reminded of their courage and struggle to change the hearts and minds of our citizens. While much progress has been made, we must continue to work together to achieve the promise and vision of our great nation. And whereas the School Board of Marion County recognizing its own diversity and that of its employed workforce and entire student body, will continue to honor Black History Month to enhance equity and diversity. Now therefore, the School Board of Marion County, Florida proclaims February as Black History Month, and it's dated today and signed by each of you." So Deputy Superintendent, I'll present this to you on behalf of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Typically, Rose does this, so I jumped at an opportunity to share in this proclamation. I just have a few things I wanted to share with you. And first of all, good evening, Mr. James, board members, Mr. Tom, Ms. Chilu, and Mr. Lake. To quote Jamar Tisby, "Black history, like Latino, Asian, European, and Native American history, belongs to all of us, black and white, men and women, young and old. Contemplating black history draws people of every race into the grand and diverse story of our nation," unquote. There are many activities planned during Black History Month, and they're at various locations around the county, including some of our schools. And I just wanted to bring just a few to your attention. There is an exhibit at the Appleton Museum. There are photos taken at Paradise Park. And for those of you who don't recall, Paradise Park was created by Silver Springs, and it was a segregated park that was opened in 1949, and I believe it closed in the late 1960s. There's also the 27th African-American Read-In at the Maine Public Library on February 28th at 2:00 PM. And we have a local African-American artist, Leroy Chandler, who will display his work at College Park on February 16th through the 18th. And of course, we have our own Black History Museum at Howard Academy. Again, thank you for the proclamation and the recognition of Black History Month and for your continued support in promoting an inclusive and multicultural environment. Thank you.
I can't let you just get away with that. You mentioned... I know I'm aging myself here. Paradise Park, I actually attended that park. I went down to that park, and it was a beautiful location right there on the Silver River. And when I say that, I want to recognize one of my board members because she's in the Black Hall of Fame, African-American Hall of Fame over at Howard Academy. And if you have not had an opportunity to visit the museum, you will see some, if you would visit it, you will see some distinguished people in there that's been around Marion County for a long time. I see Dr. Anna Wees back there, and she's in charge of that museum. And you'll see people like Mr. Herbert Coleman. You'll see some of the really outstanding educators and community leaders. You'll see people like Westo Long, which is over 100 years old, and he was one of the first people to have a grocery store in West Ocala. And it's one of these things where you get a chance to really to look at what actually occurred. I don't want to date myself, but I actually went to school in that museum. When it was a school, when it was a school, guys. I was in third grade, by the way. So I just want you to know that. But if you have an opportunity to go over and just look at the many distinguished people there, it'll give you an idea of what actually occurred here. Thank you.
Can I say something?
You sure can.
Okay. Well, Mr. James also is in that museum, just so everybody would know, but also I can say a little bit about Paradise Park, you know. I saw a lot of the pictures in our Black History Museum over at Howard Academy. And a lot of the pictures, if you never realized that they had two separate parts, but they would come together, if you never saw it, the pictures reflect the history so well, it just brought back memories. There was Ross Allen in a picture, and he had a black handler. And I was like, wow. I remember going there because this district, this Marion County School District, made sure that we, as students, did go out to Silver Springs and part of Paradise Park. So, and our community is full of history, you know, and I'm just proud of everyone. You, Mr. James, you, Dr. Wees, and then I'm forgetting your name because it just went right through me. Teresa, Teresa Bosnelli, you've made history for us, too. But I think we all, I remember it was something, every day, we all make history, you know?
We do.
Yeah, thank you.
May I say something?
Sure.
I want to thank the teachers ahead of time for celebrating Black History Month in school and educating our students of all of the famous black people and also the history. When I was in elementary school in Buffalo, New York, our buses were segregated, and we had a white and negro water fountain. We've come a long way from that point. We've got a ways to go, for sure, but our children need to understand the history of black history and what it's all about. So I hope teachers, parents, you talk to your kids about it, especially this month coming up in February. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stacy.
And I'd like to say, there's, I've studied a lot. I came from an area that during segregation, we had a black high school, black elementary school, but our community was very, very integrated. I was in Pahokee in Belgrade, Florida, where the white was the minority. And so I grew up in a culture that was quite different than a lot of people grew up in that were white in the South. I grew up in a very, very integrated community, and so I have some great memories of that. And because I grew up there, I know a lot of history that is not in our books. A lot of the historians and the Library of Congress, there's much, much history that is not in our history books that I've spoken about from my board seat before. And for example, had it not been for James Armistead, we probably would have not won the American Revolution. He was a double spy. His work as a double spy fed the British into the hands of the French at the Battle of Yorktown, and we won that when we were losing the revolution. And had it not been for James Armistead, who no longer is in our history books, but he was in our history books up until about six years ago. And had it not been for that man, who was a slave, that had left and fought in the battle, we may be in the hands of the British today, but many don't know that history. And I'm glad I could share it with you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I got to say something. I'm just going to say, it is an honor to sit between two awesome Hall of Famers right here. It is an honor and my pleasure, but also I am confident that there is great things going on in our schools. When you mentioned that, I could just envision walking down the hallways, and lots of times they will display things that they've learned and things that are in the past, but things that are also current. And I'm just going to leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You're a little young, you know that.
I'm important. I'm sitting between Hall of Famers.
Okay. Individuals who completed their appropriate form prior to 5:40 PM have the opportunity to address the board. Before you begin your presentation, it is required that you state your name and address for the record. Additionally, please spell out your last name. Matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsion, will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents wishing to address the board regarding a disciplinary matter will have the opportunity to do so at that time. I will now ask the board attorney to explain some additional points. Mr. Lake.
Thank you and good evening. If you plan to address the school board tonight, please be aware of the school board procedures. Copies of those procedures are available from Mr. Christian or from one of the front tables. Under the school board's procedures, audiovisual presentations are permitted if provided at least 48 hours prior to the meeting to the school board's assistant. AV presentations are limited to a total of five minutes. Remember, the use of any student's name, except by his or her parents or guardian, or identifying references to or identification of other students and their families is strictly prohibited. Based on time consideration, the school board, by a majority vote, may rightfully limit the number of presentations on any one topic, shorten presentation time, move the public comment time to a different position on the agenda, or eliminate the public comment time altogether. Mr. James?
How many do we have?
Three.
Okay. And may we have our speaker?
Gary White.
My name is Gary Byron White. I live at 9280 Southwest 96th Court Road, Ocala, and it's 34481. Board members, Chairman James, and Mr. Tom. It has come to our attention that some very objectionable materials are being used in our schools. The Florida Citizens Alliance has broken these objectionable materials into six categories: Reconstruction, Revisionist History, Religious Indoctrination, Political Indoctrination in US History, and Common Core Math and Pornography. We find the last category to be particularly disturbing. We respectfully ask each of you to review our findings and to remove these materials from our schools. I have information for you that I would like for my people to help pass to you. It's been such a peaceful evening. I don't come to you as a menace. I come to you, please, asking you for some good attention on this subject. Things that you and I wouldn't even have conversation about are available in these books that are being suggested that our grandchildren would go out and read during summer. Even the names of the books are not even sayable at this place. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We further ask that you obey Florida Statute 1006.28, I'm sorry, 1006.283, or Senate Bill 864, that was signed into law 2014, and develop a policy and process for public review and feedback of instructional materials used or to be used in our Marion County public schools. We think it would be a good idea to form a committee or network of people to review all instructional materials. In use today, and especially to review any instructional materials before they are purchased. It is also important to note that Florida Statute 1003.42 lists what is to be in our history books, our U.S. history books. And some of the textbooks being used may be in violation of this law. We thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you.
Have any questions? I'd be glad to try to answer them. Florida website, Florida Citizens Alliance, is a good place to go to gain new information and/or contact Ed Wilson. Is there any questions?
Okay, I'll go to Ms. Stacy, then Ms. Boynton.
You quoted a statute on the history. You said 1003.42?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'll write that down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Boynton?
I would just like to say, Mr. White, you just gave us this information. And being that you listed some critical, to me, as a board member, issues, I would like for you, I mean, you just came and gave it up to us. I'd like to be able to review this, sit with our superintendent, you know, for a while, and we discuss it before I can respond to you. Because I don't, I mean, I'm just looking at this and...
This is just a presentation.
Okay. So you don't want us to do anything about it?
For your much-needed oversight into some of the ridiculous things that Common Core are creating in our community, among our children. It has to be addressed, and we just thank you so much for giving it your time, your valued time, in every respect.
Mr. White, we are developing our committee to get our curriculum and textbooks at this point. So it is a process that we are in, in the process of putting together a review panel for this. So we want to rest assured that we will take into consideration. And I know this superintendent has a committee that he's working on. If you want to meet with him and talk with him about what we're doing, we are well into that process.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Tomlin. Thank you all very much for taking the time to listen to me. Thank you.
I just also want to add in, we have talked about that we are developing the policies. But I do want to speak to the board and to make sure that we do do our due diligence, to make sure that when this policy comes through, that we are committed to make sure that there is never any room for error for inappropriate materials to come into our school systems locally. And I'm just gonna leave it at that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for everybody who came to support us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ann?
Chris Altobello.
Good evening, Chairman James, Superintendent Tomlin, board members. Chris Altobello, 2020 Northeast 43rd Street, Ocala, Florida. Here's my message to 180,000 public schoolteachers. Thank you. Thank you for your dedication. Thank you for your professionalism. Thank you for your long days of teaching and your long nights of grading papers and preparing for the next day's lessons. We don't appreciate our teachers as we once did. Over the past 20 years, teachers have been demonized, demoralized, and blamed for what some politicians want to brand a failing public education system. With a steady stream of mandates and micromanaging coming from the state Capitol, teachers have had to constantly adjust to the policies pushed by the politically well-connected, education-for-profit folks. A sampling of those changes includes standardized testing, grading schools, creating the FCAT, adopting Common Core curriculum, switching to new, unproven tests, tying teachers' salaries and school grades to student performance on high-stake tests, pushing expansion for-profit charter schools and vouchers, converting public schools to charters, and implementing controversial bonus schemes instead of increasing teachers' salaries. Teachers have not been particularly engaged in the political process. They've been too busy jumping through bureaucratic hoops. The devaluing of classroom teachers is taking its toll on them and may have reached a tipping point. Teachers are fed up, frustrated, and many are leaving the profession. One such example is Wendy Bradshaw, special education teacher at Polk County, who resigned and spoke out about her reasons for leaving public education. Her heartfelt resignation letter was posted on social media and quickly spread nationally. Wendy, an outstanding teacher with a bachelor's, master's, and doctoral degrees in education, was consistently rated highly effective in her evaluations. She is the kind of teacher we need to recruit and retain. Unfortunately, she is the type of teacher that we're chasing away. She said she had become more disturbed by the misguided reforms taking place, which are robbing her students of developmentally appropriate education, and that she cannot justify making students cry anymore. This past week, thousands of educators flocked to Tallahassee, hoping that legislators would hear their concerns. The rally in Tally was part protest, part call to arms. Teachers from all over the state gathered to deliver a unified message that enough is enough. What do they want? They want politicians out of the classroom. They want policy decisions to be made on input from education professionals. They want an end to high-stakes testing. They want the same accountability standards for voucher programs and for profit charter schools as they have. They want an end to the best and brightest teacher bonus program. They want better wages for teachers and more autonomy in their classrooms. Wendy was just one of the speakers at the rally. She lamented that the whims of the politicians were more important than the students. After attending a state Board of Education meeting, she left feeling the board was only listening to the opinions of those seeking to profit off of our children and not those who want children to profit from their education. Other fed-up teachers are speaking out. Susan Bowles, a kindergarten teacher in Alachua County, turned to Facebook to deal with the test that she is expected to give to five-year-olds, and why she will no longer give some of them to her students, even if it costs her her job. Joshua Katz, an Orange County algebra teacher, took to YouTube with a fiery 17-minute attack on high-stakes testing, calling it "the toxic culture of education." It's quite compelling. It's great that teachers are speaking out. Will legislators listen? The legislature doesn't ignore farmers or ranchers when developing agricultural policy, doesn't ignore business when setting virtually any policy, doesn't ignore doctors when changing healthcare policy, and certainly doesn't ignore sheriffs when discussing criminal justice policy. Yet they turn a deaf ear to teachers, the education experts with hands-on experience. Why? Teachers are forced to use a specific curriculum and standardized tests. They're required to fill out endless bureaucratic paperwork. They have to adapt quickly to constant changes coming from Tallahassee. Ironic, since the legislature professes to believe in less government, it's disingenuous for the legislator to tie educators' hands and then blame them for not being innovative. They are the ones responsible for stifling creativity. It's no wonder we have a teacher shortage. Perhaps the rally will entice more teachers to actively engage in the political arena. Imagine what would happen if 180,000 teachers started calling their legislators out on their actions. Better yet, what if they all registered to vote and voted? The Florida Legislature might hear them. I would love to take credit for this little speech I gave you, but it was written by Paula Dockery, who served in the Florida Legislature for 16 years as a Republican from Lakeland. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Boynton?
Well, Chris, I'm sorry that you went ahead and sat down. And we wasn't aware that it wasn't your speech, but I felt your speech, you know, here. And I just wanted to remind you, this board, your board, believes in the things that you said. And we took a stand in our platform, and even in resolutions to our legislators on behalf of teachers and our students and our administrators, because they already have their hand tied. But I want to thank you for sharing with us that speech. But realize, you have a board that's standing right there.
Very much do so.
Thank you.
Ms. Stacy?
That's right. In fact, we braved it and had some things in our resolution that no other district in the state had. And since then, the other districts have said, wow, y'all were brave. But I also want to say that Wendy in Polk County, one of my Facebook friends taught with her. And so when this came out, I shared it, you know, when it came across. And she wrote me, she said, "I know her very well. I taught with her, and what a disappointment that she has left education." She was a colleague of hers on my Facebook, so.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, Chris. Ann?
Dr. Robert Dreyfus.
I'm Dr. Robert Dreyfus, D-R-E-Y-F-U-S, residing at 70 Sequoia Loop Drive, Oklahoma, Florida, 32179. I've been involved with and concerned about education for many years. Matter of fact, I never, ever thought, I'll be 80 in my next birthday, I never, ever thought that I would ever see our nation in the condition that it's in during my lifetime. It's just almost inconceivable to me. And I lay most of that situation at the feet of the government school system, which you all represent. I served as chairman of curriculum a number of years back. And anybody that thinks that the school system can be reformed is just wrong. Anybody that has been involved with trying to bring about an improvement in the public school system has come to that same conclusion. James Dobson and Gary Bauer stated in their book, "Children at Risk: A Great Civil War Values Rages Today." Two sides with vastly different and incompatible worldviews are locked in a bitter conflict that permeates every level of society. The struggle now is for the hearts and minds. The war is not fought with bombs and bullets, but with ideas. The struggle is for the hearts and minds of our children. The enemy's weapon are the public, our government schools, which have lowered academic standards, indoctrinated generations of children to believe in evolution, relativism, feminism, multiculturalism, socialism, sexual promiscuity, teach that God is irrelevant and that the religion of secular humanism holds the best hope for mankind. Homosexual organizations are indoctrinating children as young as five in many public schools into accepting homosexuality as a normal alternative lifestyle. And 3,500 schools have homosexual clubs. The government school system is much worse than they were in 1983, when the National Commission on Excellence in Education issued their study that said, quote, "If a foreign power were responsible for the state of education in America, we would have considered it an act of war." World War III has been in existence for many years, and the enemy is winning the territory it values most our children's minds. Secular education's intent is to sever our nation from its Christian moorings by instilling a secular humanist worldview in children, so that when they become adults, serving in the courts, the government, the news media, the entertainment industry, and even in our churches, they'll retain a secular worldview. This process is so successful that Christian researcher George Barna states that in the average congregation, only 9% of the congregation has a biblical worldview. And moreover, only 51% of pastors have a biblical worldview. Studies show that by the time children reach the age of 13, they've developed the worldview and the relationship with Christ they'll probably have throughout their life. Would you put your child on a plane that only had a 10% successful chance of landing? I don't think so. The Baptist Council on Family Life reports that 88% of children who attend government schools leave the church and most never return. Whereas in home schools, over 90% of home-school children accept Christ as their Lord and Savior. We must educate and disciple our children before their hearts are hardened. Children should be our most precious possession. And Christians need to provide a Christian education for children, either by homeschooling or enrolling them in a truly Christian school. And all Christian schools are not successful in inculcating a biblical worldview in the children. Frankly, I would live in a tent and eat beans if I had to, to send to homeschool my child. America is no longer a Christian nation because we're treating symptoms rather than the cause of the problems, the secular public schools. If anyone thinks that their child is learning because they're getting As and Bs due to grade inflation, grades mean little or nothing. Don't think a Christian teacher is effective in neutralizing the anti-Christian bias of public schools. Their hands are tied, and if they profess their faith, they'll be reprimanded or terminated. Don't think your children are missionaries in public schools. They aren't. If you believe this, why not send your child to a Muslim school? And don't think money will improve education. It will not. America spends more money per child on education than any other industrialized nation, and we're dead last academically. Again, I strongly suggest to any parent that might be listening to take their kids out of the public school system and homeschool them, which is what I would do, but, you know, that's whatever. It's a lot easier than most people think.
Dr. Dreyfus? Dr. Dreyfus, can I say something?
Please.
Dr. Dreyfus, I've known you most of my adult life.
Sorry about that.
I have utmost respect for you and your family. You were my dentist at one time, and my kid's dentist. The internet has really helped a lot for us to spread the word of improvement in our schools. It's really enlightened a lot of people that before were not involved in the schools. And I can tell you, we have some wonderful, you know where I am with my beliefs, and we have some fabulous teachers that are right there with me in the beliefs. And we have people here from the Tea Party who came to discuss some of our books and things that we would not be able to do had it not been for the internet. I believe things have really sped up through the internet to help us focus in on some of the things where schools might be teaching things besides math and English and the stuff that really we learned when we were in school without all the social adjustments to it. And I believe America might be waking. I'm an ideal idealist.
I know you are.
I see where things are, and I know where they can be. There's hope. Thank you.
I like to think so, but I'm beginning to wonder if we haven't gone too far over the edge. Go ahead.
I understand that you're working as a dentist now out in the Sequoia area.
Well, we're working to establish a mobile dental clinic to serve the indigent free of charge.
That's great. That's great. I was happy to see that.
It's greatly needed.
You know, Dr. Dreyfus, I've read a lot of your writings through Marguerite Kavanagh, and I respect you highly, and I believe there's hope. You know, I do believe in school choice, but I'm not going to advocate from my seat or even everywhere for parents to take their children out of public school. Because I believe, just like Mr., Chris just came up and stood up, we are out there fighting the battle. This board took on the battle. There were some issues that he even brought to light that many of you probably don't know, that they gave $10,000 scholarship to new teachers. And we started thinking, you know, and they had to have passed the ACT and SAT.
The high score.
You know, just like a high school student, you know. And here are teachers that have been in the system, you know, working hard. And we, I think our board was one of the only one in the state that said, "We ask the legislators to end that," before they even voted on it again. We took a stand, because our board, I think, is, we're proactive. We work, we hear what the union is saying, we hear what Marion United for Education, for public education is saying, and we also hear our students. We hear our teachers, we hear our staff. And we definitely are listening to you, and I thank you for coming to present your ideas to this board.
Well, I really have a heart for children. And I just hate to see the devastation that is occurring with children today. And I lay most of it at the feet of the public school system.
All right. Thank you, Dr. All right. Thank you, Dr. Dreyfus. Anybody else?
I really didn't want to get into debate on that, because there's other sides to the story. And I know that once we open that can of worms and I got a big debate going on, I will just share that with, share this with you. The greatest equalizer in this country is public education. And I just want all of us to remember that America is great because of its educational system. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Boynton, second by Mrs. Ely. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to remove from the table the motion to adopt the instructional calendar for the 2016-2017 school year? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Boynton, second by Mrs. Ely. The motion is now on the floor. Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Have you got everyone?
No.
It shows that I did it. Oops, sorry. I didn't submit it.
Okay, the motion passed 5-0. The motion is now on the floor. Is the adoption, the adoption of the instructional calendar for 2016-2017 school year. It's now open for discussion. Any discussion?
A little bit of discussion. I've gone through the calendars, and I've had a little bit of back and forth, spoke with Mr. Tomlin briefly, and I've made some calls, some emails. And in looking at the early release days, having some type of pattern to it, even if we could only have the pattern the first half of the year, would still, I still believe, would help parents a lot to have a pattern to it, I guess, whichever one of the plans that worked the best. I was looking at number three, and I did have some questions, and I couldn't get Ms. Dudley on the phone in a timely fashion. She was busy, and I did speak briefly with Mr. Tomlin, and I had some questions about, like on the, on some of the testing that was on, that stood in the way of number three, like the FSA rights. I didn't know whether that was just one day, or was that the whole week? And you said it was the whole week, the FSA rights.
Yes, ma'am. FSA rights does take about two weeks of time. We are required now to have most of our students take the FSA rights on computer. There's only one grade, maybe two grades that still take it on paper, but I believe almost everyone takes it. So we need, with the number of computers we have, we do block out that entire two weeks for FSA rights.
I made some phone calls. I contacted, just looked at some of the high performing districts, and I shared this with Mr. Tomlin also briefly tonight coming in, not for this year, but for us maybe to have some discussion about at some point in time. I spoke to Dr. Corbett Wilson, who's in charge of staff professional development in Seminole County. Seminole County's a highly ranked, ranked ninth in the state. And something that they've done since he came there, he doesn't know when it started, but he said he came in 2006, and it's always been that way. They take an hour off every Wednesday. And he said that the teachers do their, you know, the principal uses it, the teachers use it, and of course, then they have their full days that they also put together. And he said the teachers definitely get their certification time that they need and everything. A lot of it's done through the school. The principals do a lot of it, and staff development does some of it also. And he said, I have a daughter that's in fifth grade, and there are a couple of times during the year, like just before Christmas break and just before the end of the year, when they do high school end of year exams, they will take two or three half days. And he said, they also take it at the elementary, even though the elementary, they don't take exams. And so they're looking at how they can possibly, there is talk about how to adjust that, you know, where the elementary students aren't affected. And he said, I can tell you, as a parent of a fifth grader, that half day's hard for me. And he said, and so when I speak to districts that are talking about taking half days, and the parents do have a little problem with it, that it is really hard for them, because, he said, I find the half day hard to deal with with my own child. And that their parent, it works better for the parents, just every Wednesday, it's just an hour, and all they do is just adjust the classes like 10 minutes or something, you know, in the classes in the day, so that they can have that. And it's not such an abrupt, sudden thing that happens out of nowhere with all of a sudden they have a whole half day off, and they have to find care for it. And so I was thinking about some of the middle school kids that I was concerned about. At least they're, you know, they're not unsupervised for the full half day. They're only unsupervised for that extra hour that the mothers have to cope with. And so I would just, I'm just throwing that out there, not for this year, because I know we're too far into it, but to ask staff development to look at that possibility. I see somebody back there. You know that maybe we can have some conversation about that, because it's been working in Seminole County for all these years, and they are a highly ranked county, and so evidently it is working. And so that's just a suggest, I mean, I'm just, that's just conversation while we're talking about this.
Ms. Ely.
I spoke with Ms. Dudley this morning. I had some questions. And I appreciate you giving us all these optional calendars, but it gave me something to look at. The second option had two early release days in, at the beginning of the year, and the other one was put in April. However, that's during testing. I would like to recommend that second option and just get rid of the eighth early release day in April. That would be my choice. And I agree with Ms. Stacy. I did talk to you about the other counties, Volusia Lake and Latwa, they're off the first Monday of each week. They're off an hour Wednesday? Wednesday, I'm sorry, because that's when the teacher attendance is the best in the middle of the week. So they're off the first Wednesday of, an hour the first Wednesday. And I would like to look at something like that next year for Marion County. I know staff development is important. I was a principal, I was a teacher, I know it's important. And I know that teachers need time to collaborate, and a half hour grade level meeting doesn't get the job done. So those are my proposals. Either option two, get rid of the April early release, or stay with this, and next year, look at an entirely different calendar.
Okay. Okay, now what I'm hearing is that you want us to stay with it and look at this for next year?
No. Well, this is what, it was that second option that I want, that would be my first choice to get rid of. We had only two early release days at the beginning of the year, and the other one was put back in April, put down to April. I would like to just get rid of that April early release, especially since it's testing.
And spring break comes.
There's no, it's not a, it's not a district staff development. It's just school.
Okay. Let me go down, Ms. Boynton.
Well, you know, I supported the original proposal, and as I listened to my colleague here who's supporting option two, and, you know, my only objection was that, first, let me say this. I realized that this calendar is put out ahead of time, that parents know before this school year ends what days will be off, what days will be early release days. So I never thought that our district was somehow hiding the calendar and then just throwing it out at the last minute. It's doing all it can do to be proactive, to prepare parents for next school year. So that's why I support the original calendar that was put out. And I also look, as we look down on all the other proposals, there was always a conflict, you know, and testing played a, testing on holiday played a major, major role in how you were developing this calendar. I support the number one, because I really believe, and the presentation that you gave us at the workshop was all about the strategic plan that you all were following. And this board is tasked with making sure that we follow the strategic plan, that we're on task, and you're going to come back and report to us. If we, if we go to option two, which is the best one of the other options that you gave us, if we went to that and we took away the early release day, which because it does conflict, I don't know how, and it says at the school, school, it's not the district.
Right, it's the school.
I just don't know. I just have some concerns, because I know it was already thought out, and you had a committee that came together for this calendar. I believe that instead of trying to micromanage the calendar, I believe that you all know what's best for the district. You know the needs, you know. I don't think that you would bring this to us if you hadn't thoroughly researched it about the needs, not just for staff or teachers, but what, because whatever happens on those early release days will help our students, will fall over into the classroom for student achievement. And I know our objective is to increase student achievement. So I'm torn here, Mr.
Let me add something after Ms. King.
Okay. I originally asked two weeks ago, because what caught my eye is that within a 30-day period between August 31st and September 28th, there was three early release days. And I understand the reasoning for that, and we understand the importance of, and the value of professional development. And I think because what happened last week, we did lose focus a little bit about what is important. And what is most important is students. And I am, I'm not comfortable within the first month and a half of school and within a month, students being, you know, without any, you know, I'm not sure that one professional development day is going to make a significant difference, you know, that one. I liked option two. Actually, I think, I'm not sure I really liked any of them at this time. I think there needs to be more dialogue, and I definitely think that there needs to be a committee that involves some teacher input and some parents in our committee. I do think that we need to begin with that. But with, given with the options that was given to us, I did like option two, because it was, staff development was proposing. But I do agree with Ms. Ely, and actually, I thought of this also, if we could just go ahead and for the date in April, because it is a conflict of interest with testing, and we don't want to, you know, impede on that, if, why couldn't we just eliminate that one? And they could have seven professional developments. Because I'm trying to recall, did you say they needed 120 points, but we offer 140 on that slide?
They needed 120 plus 20 for ESC, so a total of 140.
Okay. But ESC, they do that, when do they do that?
At the same time, they do their other certifications. They can give it down during district and services and that sort of thing.
So they do that, they can do that. But they also are receiving district and service days and the other time also, correct?
Combined.
Combined.
They get 140, yes.
Okay. So if they, if we didn't have it on April 3rd, or the week of the April 3rd, how many points are we looking at?
Two for each one. They're giving 10 points completely in five years.
Okay, two. Okay, two. And also, why we also need to continue our dialogue, it has also been brought to my attention, for example, our music teachers, they don't always have their professional developments in school. They have to travel, and by the time they travel across the county, they're not necessarily getting the time that they needed. So there does need to be some dialogue and communication, probably in each area, to make sure that everyone's needs are being met. And those are my thoughts.
Okay, let me get in before I go back around. I did have the opportunity to get out to some SAC meetings and talk with the SAC committees, and then with students, there was community members, there were family members in there, and I just completed one today. And that's why I was rushing in here, because I had just completed one. And one of our topics was the early release days and the professional development days. And I will tell you that, talking with the principals and people out there that, and listening to the SAC committees, I feel it would be unjustous for us to change it, what they have, if we want to discuss this for next year and do something a little different like what you all are saying. But I'm just asking you people to just believe that I did get out there, and I did talk with these groups of people. I heard from students. And the students said, well, one thing, Mr. James, I don't think it's long enough, because we really got a chance to do some neat things. I did talk with one principal with her school advisory group today, and she gave me the impression that these are some of the most important things that we do in terms of the working with their staff, and especially the young ones. And when I look at, I look at what we are doing here today, I just feel very strongly that if we work with number one, and then we schedule a workshop prior, prior to us putting this thing out there for next year, so all of the, all of our, all of our thoughts can be really vetted, and then we can really let the teachers, and you can get out there with your SAC committees, and talk with these people, rather than for us to, to say, hey, let's do something different when we got a staff that have worked on this thing. We got, and you don't have to take my word for it, but I did go out and talk with people other than the collective group. And I will recommend to this board that we accept the superintendent's recommendation, and we accept it with the idea that we will have an opportunity next year to really get the input, and the teachers and things will know that we will have an opportunity to work on the calendar, and they can get in here and look at it. And then one of the things I will say, if we want to talk about rigor and what we're doing with it, this will be an opportunity for us to really get that information. And this is what I'm saying to you. Okay, Ms. Stacy.
I've spoken to a lot of people about this, a lot of teachers and a lot of parents. The three early dismissal days jammed in together is just going to upset some apple carts at the first of the year with children coming and going. I just fear something's going to happen to a child, because they're just not going to be used to this. And the parents, you know, have been hit with that all at once after the kid's going back to school, and some of them have been in daycare and stuff. And I sit here and I listen to two people that were elected by the citizens of Marion County. There's a reason that they elected a, Mrs. King, to be on the school board to guide us along on the teacher's perspective. There's a reason Mrs. Ely was elected as a principal also of an A school, who's been an A principal for many, many years. And I have to respect the educators and the high performing principal that I have sitting to my left. And if they believe, I didn't really know which of the options, as a parent, not an educator and business person, I look at, as a business person, I wouldn't want to turn my business totally, in a totally different direction all of a sudden, and expect people to follow along and not balk, you know, to have this suddenly hit them, and have childrens not be attended like they should be because the parents are just caught off guard with this dramatic change. And so if Mrs. Ely and Mrs. King believe that option two is the best option, then I feel that a wise person listens to wise counsel, and I consider my colleagues to be very wise. And apparently, the people of Marion County do also, because they were elected to serve. So I will stand with what they believe works the best in the classroom. Thank you.
Yes, yes. I just want to want people to know that. When I went out to the SAC committees today, I did go into the after-school programs that they had. I went down in the cafeteria, and I looked at the number of kids that they had that were in there working with the program. And they were taking care of those kids. And one of the things that they said, when we have these opportunities to do that, parents can allow their kids to come into extended daycare. So when I hear all about these kids walking out in the street and all of that, the parents, we have a built-in mechanism. And this is why I'm saying, guys, let's give these people the benefit of the doubt in terms terms of that and let's look at what we want to do. And by the way, I was elected too. I just want y'all to know that, you know? And I think Ms. Boynton was elected. And I didn't get here on the back of a turnip truck either. I did go out and I talked with these people and I looked at the fact that we do have an opportunity here to, if we have some concerns about this, give our people that's working with this an opportunity to do their job. I didn't call anybody else, but I went out there and I talked with people on the outskirts of Marion County. Ms. Boynton.
I want to say, Mr. James, for record, I did talk to parents too, but I talked to parents. I laid it out before them. And one parent said to me, "We are starting school a little bit earlier and I do believe that this is okay." She said, "As long as I get that calendar in my hands by April," and I don't know if we'll have it by April, but she said, "As long as I get that in my hands by April, I start planning around the calendar." Another parent, I will say what she said because I thought it was like, "Okay." She said, "Well, I don't want them to have any early release days and I want them in school six days a week." I said, "Okay." But I listened to the parents, which is why, you know, it's because, and most of them noticed instantly we're starting another week earlier than before. And so they're saying, "We're starting school a little bit earlier," and they would be comfortable with that. And most of them, I did take note, most of them have their children in their extended day program.
Okay. I will go to the superintendent at this time, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. James. I appreciate the board's attention to this matter. Our staff does take creating a calendar very, very seriously and we spend an exorbitant amount of time on this. As you ponder this issue, I am intrigued by the suggestion that we look at more early release days but of a shorter duration. But I do not think, and I appreciate Mrs. Stacy's comments, that we not address that at this moment in time. There are too many factors involved as far as transportation, turnaround time for buses, notifying parents, this would be a substantial change. The elimination of instructional time because this would be more time out of the instructional time. So I appreciate you not wanting to go that direction at this moment. However, I do think it is food for thought and I would be very interested in pursuing that and it certainly will be on the agenda for the calendar group that we put together for next year. I would like to ask the board, I do not remember what your perception was from the work session we had last week on what you believe that individually, you could not act as a board last week, you were acting as individuals because you weren't sitting in session like you are. But was your commitment to early release days, was your commitment to eight days? I'm just asking you, I do not recall what that commitment was. I remember your commitment toward professional development. I remember your commitment toward early release days. What I'm hearing so far is the elimination of one of the eight days, essentially is what I'm hearing. And I don't recall what your commitment was to the community that was listening to you, whether it was eight or seven. And I just remind you that for food for thought.
Ms. Ely.
We didn't have these options from Ms. Dudley last...
That is correct. You did not, the only thing you had last week was the standard calendar and then the discussion points. And again, I appreciate you pointing out that how Mrs. Dudley presented this for us, I think in an easy-to-read format that gave us a good way to compare the different proposals.
I wanted to point out something else. I was looking at the calendar for this year. We had two early release days in September compared to next year. The original proposal is for three. So we did have two this year.
Okay. Board, we got the superintendent's recommendation on the board. Do I have a motion to amend the superintendent's recommendation?
I'll make a motion to amend if, but I will stand with what the majority of the board wants. I'll vote with the board. I'll make a motion to amend if that's something that someone wants to consider.
I have a motion to amend the superintendent's recommendation to what?
To what is that? What is that?
To amend to option two.
May I ask for clarification there? I think that, and I'm recommending number one, but I don't want to put words into your mouth. I believe that what you are saying is that you are making an amendment to eliminate the second early release day on September the 14th. I think that is a simplification.
I'm just making a motion.
That's what you suggested, let's not worry about the different options you have. What you're, I think you want to amend is to remove the September 14th early release date because we don't have to talk about placing it somewhere else and then not having it. But that would be your amendment.
And that would be just for this year. And if we went to the hour weekly and we reexamine the calendar, the teachers would more than make up that time and certification time in following years. I mean, this would just be one year, two hours. And if we changed the way we did things next year, they would more than make up the time.
Ms. Thomas, that's September 12th, not, there's no 14th.
Okay. Board, we have a motion.
Is, may I clear that? A motion to amend the recommendation to eliminate the September 14th early release date.
I think it's the week of September 12th, so it's probably September 14th.
It is, that is the week of September 12th. It is, the date is September 14th. So the move to amend the superintendent's recommendation by eliminating the early release day on 9/14. I'm looking to the back of the room, is that what I'm hearing?
Would that be option two?
Okay.
And I don't know who made that motion to amend.
Okay, Ms. Stacy made the motion to amend it to option two. Okay, do I...
But is that what that means as option two? It's just removal of that?
Here's how the motion will read.
This is option two.
By eliminating the early release day on 9/14. Ms. King, do you agree with that? So that is the motion, the motion. And I'm assuming you need a second and then we need to go from there.
Okay, I need to get a second on that emotion.
Second.
Okay. Ms. King, second it. Okay, now I'm going to open it for discussion.
Yes, sir.
Okay, again, I'm going to say this. Guys, I'm going to vote against that motion simply because I would like for us as a board to put this on the agenda for us to work this out for next year rather than for us to sit here tonight and do it. This will give us enough time to really get with our staff and get with the people, get out there and work with your SAC committees and get more involvement in it. Because I'm saying this to you because it affected a lot of people. And for us not to include a mechanism that we already have in place, like those SAC committees, those people came out there and I want to just say the ones that I went to was really well done. And they had music, they had people explaining the program, they had the kids in there. And for us to not to give them what they want and for us to not to want to investigate it and make sure that we are thorough. I know we've gotten various calls, I've gotten calls. But by the same token, I am saying to you, is this so important that we will override what those people are doing back there and just say, "Hey, let's go ahead and do that?"
Mr. James, the calendar comes to the board for us to look at it. And if we feel strongly that this change to the third day is a lot for parents to handle, when I spoke with the head of professional development in Seminole County, and he said it's even hard sometimes for him to deal with his child with just a half day, and this is the head of staff development there. And so, I mean, that educator also shared with me that it's just such, it's just hard. And so when the parents are dealing with that, I feel that the reason it comes to, the calendar comes to us for a vote is if we see something like this that jumps out at us and concerns us, we're not doing our job if we ignore the way we feel about it and we don't bring it to our fellow board members' attention. And that's the reason we vote on it. I mean, everything's not just a rubber stamp here, that we do have input as board members. And I've heard the input of Ms. King and I've heard the input of Ms. Zeeley. And I do not believe that removing one early dismissal day when next year we will more than make up the certificate hours if we readjust next year is going to do anything but maybe help some families. It's not going to hurt anyone, it's going to possibly help families. And after all, that's what we're here for is for the kids. I'm not here as a jobs program for people in staff development. I am here for student success and that's, I have to put the kids first and the families first.
Okay. I didn't call anybody in Seminole County, I'll be up front with your board members. But I did talk with people that had the same problem in Marion County. That said, I have a kid that this will be affected by. You know, they were just people that I work with all the time, I see them in this area and I'm going to tell you again, I did not talk with anybody other than the people that this is being affected by. Didn't go out there and run around and talk to anybody. And I don't want to get into this anymore because I simply believe, and from day one, I've said that this is important because I know how this thing work at the high school level especially, when you got all those different departments out there that's meeting and trying to do various things and trying to get there and meet with these people, whether you got a math department, you got a social department, you got an English department, you got a PE department, you got a science department, and it don't work like that. I'm trying to say this to you. And I'm saying it as a sitting here saying, "We need to really think this out, think this through." And rather than just say, "Hey, let's go to option two, take something off the table," when I had the opportunity to sit here and actually talk with people.
Well, Mr. James, I spoke to a parent, she called me, and she had spoken to you first and she was very concerned about the three days right up front. And she called to talk to me about that. She has a student, Osceola, and she also has a...
Did she talk to me?
And you told her to call her school principal.
And she was from Osceola?
She was from Osceola and she had another student that was in your district and she spoke to you and she told me that you allegedly said to her, "We just need to call your principal and talk to your principal." And I said, "The principals don't really have any say." And she said to you, "Well, why the principal?" And you said, "Well, I talk to the principals." So a parent did call and you didn't want to talk to her about it, according to this mom. And so I did talk to her and she was very concerned about the upfront early dismissal days.
Okay. And I'm not going to get into who called me or whatever. I did get out to those SAC committees meeting and the guys, I am telling you what I feel and I got it locally.
We all have our own feelings too.
We all have our feelings.
Okay.
Mr. James, you know, I understand exactly what you're saying. When you talk to parents, I mean, we have 42,000 students, so we have a lot of parents. But we also, I mean, I also value what the parents who I spoke to said. I value their opinion that they could instantly look at this calendar and say, "Well, why are y'all starting school early?" They were totally, they're totally aware of the calendar system that we have. I value the fact that we had principals here on Thursday at our workshop, Ms. Laffey, Mrs. Elsmann. I value their opinion. This room was full of teachers. I mean, it was overflowing. And I value the input, their thought process that they brought to us. But I value the department of professional development and the early release day calendar people, that committee that put forth this calendar, I value that. So I'm going to support your recommendation, Mr. Superintendent, without the amendment because I believe that they're in the trenches, they're working. We're not. We're hearing what individuals have to say. And although we respect what they have to say and value their input, there's been some work, some thought process, and we had a strategic plan that guided the making of this calendar. And I would hate to see this board say our strategic plan is worthless, that we shouldn't follow it. No matter what the board decides, I would say to the staff, to teachers, to principals, our strategic plan is where we stand and is what I want us to continue to be guided by. We are here to get some positive results from our students, but I do believe that I'm going to support the information I got from the parents. And I'm going to support you, Mr. Superintendent, on your motion.
Now we have, what we have on the table now is we have the option two.
Here's, if I could read, read the language. What you have is a motion on the floor to amend the 1617 instructional calendar that was removed from the table by eliminating the early release day on September 14th, 2016. That's the amendment that is on the floor right now.
Okay. I will call the question at this time.
I have a question. I had talked about eliminating the early release day on April 5th from option two.
What he did was just take this one and he just...
You're not adding it anywhere then?
Right.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
That is correct. There would only be seven. That's why I asked the question. I'm not sure what your commitment was to the teachers, whether it was eight or seven early release days. This does create an instructional calendar that if you pass this amendment, then you would vote on the amended calendar, but it eliminates one of the early release days. It eliminates the September 14th. That's what you're voting on right now.
I will call the question. All in favor of option two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Nay. The motion passed. Three, two.
And now you go from here to this sentence.
If there's no further discussion, I will call a vote on the original motion as amended.
That is to approve the original calendar with the removal of the September 14th early release day.
Okay.
Okay.
That has already been moved.
I would like to, thank you. But I'd like to see the calendar be presented to the superintendent and his staff so they can hurry and get it so that the parents will have it. So I will vote with the new motion only because I am supporting making sure that this calendar gets out to the parents and students. But I'm totally, you know, against withdrawal of it.
All righty.
Call the question.
I call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed for one. The superintendent, do you have a calendar?
Thanks, sir.
May I have a motion to approve the following donations? $4,328.50 to College Park Elementary School from the Public Education Foundation for grants for Great Ideas Project, Creating Tomorrow in Ventures Today. $4,508 to Fort King School from the Public Education Foundation for the grant for Great Ideas, Super Library Program. $3,041.95 to Fort King School, Middle School from the Public Education Foundation for Grants for Great Ideas, Kindling of Kids. $2,096.63 to Green Bay Elementary School from the Green Bay Elementary PTO. $2,500 to Lake Ware High School from the Southwest... Foundation for the Grant for Great Ideas Super Library Program. Three thousand forty-one dollars and ninety-five cents to Fort King School, Middle School from the Public Education Foundation for Grant for Great Ideas, Kindling of Kids. Two thousand ninety-six dollars and sixty-three cents to Green Bay Elementary School from the Green Bay Elementary PTO. Two thousand five hundred dollars to Lake Ware High School from the Southwest Family Trust. Two thousand dollars to Marion Community Public Schools, grant and federal program from Wells Fargo Banks, N.A. One thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars to Marion County Public School K-212 Academic Services from the Silver River Museum. One thousand dollars to Madison Street Academy from Research Engineers Manufacturing Incorporated. A Nissan Falklift valued at four thousand five hundred dollars to Marion Technical Institute from Signature Brand LLC. One thousand dollars to Vanguard High School from Silver Gorman, M.D. I probably need some help on that one, guy. Gotti.
Gamati.
Gamati. One thousand dollars to Vanguard High School from Michael E. Ruby. Two thousand dollars to Westport School from Arlene Duncan. Two thousand five hundred dollars to Westport High School from Susan Sugar. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Ely and second by Mrs. Boynton. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed five zero. Ms. Boynton, will you say thanks for us today?
Well, I really want to thank all of the people in our community who so graciously give of their, out of their heart to our schools to make sure we have students achieving. It's a joy for me to see those numbers every two weeks, that you are thinking about us. You're thinking about the students, and you understand there's a greater need than the budget that we get. And so, I want to thank you so very much. I'm going to ask my partner here to tell me what was the total.
The grand total?
Yes.
Okay. It was eighty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents. But when you add the six thousand dollars from the Board of Realtors and the sixteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars from the Tax collectors office for the kids' tag art program, it comes to a hundred and four thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars, fifty-seven cents.
Wow.
That's incredible. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Meeting a reminder, board members. Oh, I'm sorry. Miss one. May I have a motion to approve a two-year employment agreement with Attorney Stephen E. Lake, who continues to serve as the in-house counsel, School Board Legal Counsel, effective October fifteenth, 2015 through October fourteenth, 2017? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Ely.
Second.
And was second by Mrs. King. All in favor signify, open for discussion?
Yes. I just wanted to make a statement before we voted on this. I wanted to acknowledge that the need for this board to have its own attorney, you know, is outlawed in the statute. But I think we, as board members, we had the opportunity to evaluate our attorney, and he received outstanding marks. But as I look back, I wanted to get some information. So, I asked staff to let me know, I mean, how much did we pay our former attorney, board attorney, Ms. Lawrence, over four years? And that total was a hundred and seventy-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars. And now that we've expanded our legal department, I wanted to know, how much is that going to cost us? And we will expand two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, two hundred and seventy thousand one hundred dollars for the attorney, the paralegal, the secretary, and any of the expenses. I don't, there's no doubt that we need an attorney. But to reach a conclusion that a twenty-two thousand dollar raise is justifiable is something I can agree to. If we had, if we were using our new School Board Attorney pay scale, then I would support us to step five or six, but we immediately took it up a little too high. So, although I love you and the work you do, Mr. Lake, I cannot support that raise in that amount. To me, that's a pair's actually salary, probably with benefits. And I, I support you. I realize we need an attorney. You've done a fantastic job. And I want to acknowledge that, but I'm also acknowledging that I cannot support that twenty-two thousand dollar raise. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah. We've gone through this.
We've already gone through it. This was not a raise. This was just a salary adjustment because we started out the wrong figures start with. So, it's not a raise. So, anyway, go ahead.
Okay. Before we get that, I concur, and I talk with Ms. Boynton. And when I say I talk with her, I've talked with her, and we have discussed attorneys for years and years and years. And it's important that we have our own attorney in the house. And I understand that when I talked with Mr. Crawford about this a long time ago. But the thing I'm going to say to you more than anything else, our administration is down here, in this building right here. And I would like for the board to be thinking about moving the legal office into this building so we will have all of our legal, all of our administrative and legal teams in this building right here. So, this is one of the things that I wanted to just share with you because I think it would benefit us most by having all of this under one roof.
I think it would benefit the legal department.
Yeah.
To be here, you know, I think they probably feel like the long range is stuck over, out in the outfield somewhere. But so, I can concur that we need to, if the superintendent could find room in this building here.
Space.
Space, yeah. Then we would, I would love to have him here. It'd be easier for us running all over the place, too. We'd just come one location.
Okay. I got some things on the board. And what I'm going to do right now is I will take this one off. And because all in favor of Mr. Lake's contract signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Any opposed?
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay. The motion passed. Three, two. Meeting a reminder, board members, we will be attending FSBA, Florida School Boards Association Day in the Legislature, February third through the fourth. Therefore, the February fourth workshop session is canceled. Whoa.
We need to get you a little closer there. We couldn't.
Okay. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Wednesday and Thursday, February seventeenth and eighteenth, 2016, at nine a.m. The purpose of this work session are to review the proposed staffing plan for the 2016 and seventeen, seventeen. Additionally, at the February seventeenth work session, the board will receive an update on the strategic plan regarding discipline. And the February, and at the February eighteenth work session, the board will receive an update on the strategic plan regarding budget and finance, as well as review the role of the Title I Parents Liaisons to the Title I School. Committee of Concern, I'll start with you, Ms. Stacy.
I'm happy. I have no concerns. I think we worked through it all.
Ms. Ely.
This is just something that I got in my AARP magazine, Fire in the Sky. It was about the Challenger explosion that happened January twenty-eighth, so that's on Thursday. I could not find this in the history books. I don't know, kids don't even know anything about this, which is really, it saddens me. But all of you remember where you were on that day. I was at a school, my school, and all of the TVs were on. We all saw it. We all went through it, and we'll never forget those minutes. But President Reagan talked to the students and the public. It was real, it was a good speech. Krista McCullough was the social studies teacher from New Hampshire who was going to give a social studies lesson. So, we were all ready for that in all the schools. It was a, it was a real tragedy. But he talked about, this is what I want to read, talked about the sacrifices made by families of astronauts. And he spoke of space as the last frontier. He said, we've grown so used to success in space that this tragedy came as a special shock. He had been asked in a private meeting with journalists about schoolchildren watching, and he said, pioneers have always given their lives on the frontier, but we have to make it clear to children that life goes on. So, I just want you all to remember thirty years ago. It's hard to believe it was that long ago, but-
That's it, really.
Yeah, I know. And the article went on to talk about children, how they perceived what happened, like, did she die? You know, when you saw the picture of the space shuttle exploding, little girl said, did she die? It was just hard to conceive of that, but thirty years ago.
It's not even in our history books.
No, I can't find it. I can't find it, so. That's it.
Ms. Boynton.
Well, I want to say to Ms. Ely, that's pivotal, you know, because if you, if you know back thirty years ago, when Krista McCullough was the first teacher to be selected to go in space like that, it was something that, I was at Shands Pharmacy with my hands in the hood, and like today, there's a television everywhere. We didn't have televisions everywhere. And I think we had the, there was a television in one of the clinics, and that's how we got the news. And it was just a shock for the entire day. And Shands was one of the hospitals they do use from NASA, so the burn unit was already. And it was a, it was a moving day. And for it not to be in our history books, I think that is the saddest thing for this nation. And I would see, I would like to see if we can at least have our students educated on that, Mr. Superintendent, you know, so they can remember.
Well, if you get the AARP magazine someday, guys, you'll get this article again.
Okay. Ms. Boynton.
I'm finished. Thank you.
Ms. King.
I just want to bring up something that I read in, not this past Sunday, but a couple weeks ago. Sunday, it, there was an article, and it was mentioned that there's a first grade teacher that entered the drop program, and I guess she cannot finish the school year. And I was just wondering if an upcoming workshop or something, if we can discuss that. And I'm just curious if there's other teachers that are in that predicament, or if maybe that was hashed out. Because if you think about students, if their teacher leaves them, you know, May first, or I think it was the end of April, is what I read, if the student doesn't have a teacher for a month, and then they go through the summer, we're looking at a first grader that's missing probably three months of education or two, not close to it. And so, I think as a board, we need to look at that because we approved the DESF, right, DESF. Hopefully, looking at what's best for our students. And so, I would like to look at that as a board. And those are my, that's my only concern for today.
Okay. What I'm hearing here is that you would like to get some information on the first grade teacher that was in the drop program, or you want to look at the whole program?
I think what would be wise to do is to do a work session or some time on the entire Deferred Retirement Option Program. So, everybody's coming from the same page. And then if we can branch out from there, once we have a thorough understanding of the program, the legal requirements according to that, and then we can talk about individual situations that might arise.
Okay. So, what I'm hearing is that we need to schedule a workshop for that.
I can do that. I'll take care of that.
Okay. Mr. Lake.
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay. Ann?
No, thank you, sir.
Okay. I just want everybody to know, I just want to thank Ann for the beautiful job she did. I know Mrs. Flo Ketter had some, I had some things that she needed to take care of. And I really, we really appreciate you being so patient with us tonight.
Thank you for being patient with me.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you for noticing, Ms. Chulley. Mr. James, I appreciate that. Some dates of importance, board. You've already been reminded of our Engage in Education meeting on February seventeenth at 5:30 p.m. at the Klein Center at College of Central Florida, one of our, one of our educational partners. Also, this Friday, this Friday, January ninth, the twenty-ninth is a district in-service day. There's no school for students. And then, just to put on your radar, again, you know, we're very actively recruiting teachers. And for the second year in a row now, after coming back for a number of years, we do have a recruiting fair on April twenty-ninth. April twenty-ninth is a recruiting fair. And I also like to talk about good news. And you know, I take this opportunity to do this all the time. But I want to highlight one of our departments, and that's our technology department. You know, and you've heard this before, that what we do with budgeted dollars is we purchase technology, and then we apply for E-rate reimbursements from the federal government. And just so you know, that in the last five years, we purchased, the more technology we purchased, the more E-rate we get back. And then the last five years, Scott Hansen and his group have applied for E-rate reimbursements totaling seven million five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars to return back to Marion County schools. And that's, that's good news. I think that's important to talk about. Mrs. Ely, you can also add Sumter Electric to your fees this year, or to, or excuse me, to your contribution this year. We are a member of the Sumter Electric Cooperative. Twelve of our schools and a couple of our sites are served by that. And it's an owner operated electric company. And we just received a reimbursement check for eleven thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars from Sumter Electric. The representative couldn't be here tonight. I told him I would certainly give Sumter Electric a shout out tonight. Now, whether, this has already been mentioned one time tonight, and whether I agree with it, which I don't happen to, and I know you have some strong feelings about the best and brightest program, but our staff has worked very hard complying with the law. And I do want to give some information on that, again, whether we agree with it or not. Sixty-four of our teachers in Marion County did qualify using the legislation that is now prescribed. Each of them received just over eight thousand dollars for a total of five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars that will be coming to those teachers who made that qualification. It is a hot topic in the House and the Senate right now in the state of Florida. I do not know what's going to happen. I appreciate and applaud your stance that it is not an appropriate way to expend those state dollars. Our staff is also working with something I think that's going to make our school system a healthier environment. We are going to be putting in an EpiPen program for next year. Epiphenphrine, of course, is a allergy, emergency allergy application that we can use for students who do have allergic reactions. And we do not staff those in our schools right now. Parents can bring in, but we do have situations where we'd like to do, like to administer that. This is a cooperative adventure between the doctors in Marion County, the supplier of the EpiPens, Marion County Health Department, and our own health liaison. And then a quick shout out to Shady Hill Elementary School. The music students there, students there submitted a music video. They've been selected as one of twelve in the United States, one of two in this particular southeastern region. I understand this music video will be aired, and it will have the opportunity to go in and vote for our favorite video. Your dollars at work, your regular dollars and referendum dollars at work. And a shout out to that school. And the final news I want to share is something of a smaller nature, but certainly very, very powerful. You know that our foundation supports and actually hosts the local Take Stock in Children program. And we have over a hundred students currently in Take Stock, in Take Stock program in our high schools. This program, that the special program called Leaders for Life selects six different students throughout the state of Florida to supplement the Take Stock scholarship and give these students up to forty thousand dollars in total, essentially a full ride scholarship. Last year, we had one recipient of that, and we were very proud of that. And this year, I'm very pleased that the work of our Take Stock in Children mentors, the work of our foundation and our Take Stock staff, we have two in Marion County. We have two of the six winners in the state. And I'm going to tell you their names. Mary Green is a student at MTI and who actually attends Buddy Oswalt's class at the College of Central Florida, and Alyssa Quick from Vanguard High School. And again, each of those students will receive a supplemented Take Stock scholarship to over forty thousand dollars each for a four-year period of time. And I think that's a powerful testimony to the strength of that program, the strength of our foundation, and what we're trying to do here as a board and an administration for the great students in Marion County. That's all I have, sir.
All right. Thank you. Just some things, just so we get some things cleaned up while you're on our mind. What I'd like for us to do, would like for the superintendent to do, is look for space where we can bring our legal department here. Do I have a consensus from the board on that?
Yes.
Oh, Ms. Boynton?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
I think it'll be convenient for me to talk to him more.
Okay. There's many considerations that are involved in such a move.
Okay. One of the things I'm going to say to you, more than anything, if we're moving into the 21st century, I really would like to try and get us under one roof one day. Not in my time. We might get everybody, all of us, all of our administrative people in one, in one area so they can work together. The next thing, too, I want to really thank the SAC committees that I had an opportunity to visit with because they really do an outstanding job. to visit with, because they really do an outstanding job. And if we really want to know what they are trying to accomplish, we need to attend some of those meetings. I had an opportunity to see, to listen how they had split up their newfound wealth, this money that they got from the state. You know, when I look, when I look at how difficult it would be sometime to get everybody to get a consensus on how to split up that newfound fortune that they get, they think it's a newfound fortune. It was just amazing to see how they worked their way through it. It was a beautiful job.
Teacher, Lee, teacher man.
Yeah, that's a newfound fortune. Everybody at that school was included in that process, so everybody got a little piece of the pie. On the Martin Luther King Day, I know most of you may have attended it, but I had some other obligations that I really had to attend. And I just want everybody to know that, as we look at our community as it grow, we have to really get out and get involved in those things, because we have to be a part of what's going on. So that's my comment for the day. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that the board members have received an alternative placement list for students through January eighth, 2016. Are there any parents in the audience who wish to speak on behalf of a student regarding a disciplinary matter? Seeing none. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student J.D. sixteen dash three-eight E., J.D. sixteen dash three-nine, and J.D. sixteen dash four-zero with educational services through the first semester of the 2016-2017 school year? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Ely.
Second.
And second by Mrs. Boynton. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There being no further business, may I have a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Ely and second by Ms. Boynton. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed five-zero. The meeting is adjourned.